For the City Council meeting of Wednesday, October 1st, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Council members Brazinski, Witherspoon, Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop.
We'd like to have everyone stand for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval for the minutes of Wednesday, September 17th, 2025, City Council meeting and bills for payment on October 3rd and 10th. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.
Today, we do not have a presentation, but we do have a public hearing scheduled at 9:30. Wherever we are on the agenda will disrupt that process, go into the public hearing, and resume public citizens to be heard and repository sales at that time.
Anyone here?
Is there any citizens to be heard? Are there any citizens to be heard? Yes, please come up to the mic, give us your name and your municipality. Good morning.
My name is Mimi O'Connor. I live in the city of Erie. Thank you for the time to allow me to speak for Justice for Marcello Woodard. Justice for Cello, as his friends and family call him, cannot occur in isolation. Healing cannot take place in isolation. For 91 days, the silence has been deafening. The silence has been its own pervasive brutality. We are well aware, those of us who have been lobbying and praying and talking with one another and begging those in authority to pay attention and to communicate, we're well aware that legalities have to be honored, of course. We all know that this takes time, of course. But what does not take time is speaking, communicating, reaching out to the family, and promising accountability and transparency. Connection and communication is life respecting and honoring life. When a baby is born, we connect in gratitude and joy, and when a loved one dies, we connect in grief and unbearable loss. We see one another, we hear one another, we reach out to one another. But when a life is brutally, cruelly, unlawfully cut off, murdered, all connection is destroyed. And in the shattered connection that follows, it is our job, as people of conscience and justice and mercy, to turn toward them, not turn away, to turn toward those who are suffering, trying desperately to survive the unspeakable suffering. It's our job, in every way we can, to create justice. You know, the word "justice" is thrown around a lot. I don't think of it as a noun. I think of it as a verb. It's not an aloof philosophy. It's what America was based on. So let's make justice a verb, full of action, because justice rolls up its sleeves and gets its hands dirty. And so, so let's say, let's justice this situation. When Cello was murdered in cold blood and then not seen and family not heard, there is an effort to erase him. So you can murder a person, but you cannot erase him. We have to justice this situation. When the witnesses, when his family and community are not heard, we have to justice this situation. Justice doesn't tell me, it shows me. It doesn't tell me what due process is, it shows me. It doesn't tell me what accountability is, it shows me. It shows me what equality and respect are. I'm going to quote Dr. King. He said, "You are responsible for what you say. You are also responsible for what you do not say." Nothing has been said. 91 days. Dr. King also said, I know you already know this, "I've decided to stick to love because hate is too great a burden to bear," unquote. So for Cello, his ever widening circle of grieving family and friends, of which I am grateful to be included, I personally will stick to saying his name like a prayer. Cello, Cello, Cello. I will stick to justicing, speaking justice, relying on justice, insisting on justice, demanding justice, holding those in authority accountable for justice, because doing nothing, saying nothing, as Dr. King said, is just too damn great a burden to bear. I want to thank you for your time, for the many things you do for this city. I'm aware of that, of your efforts to make this city a sanctuary of mattering, every citizen mattering, a city of conscience and of compassion. It's compassion with feet, it's actionable compassion. This Saturday at 21st and Parade, there's a rally to honor Cello again, a very peaceful parade. I'm not in charge of anything, I'm just a citizen who cares, and I would invite every one of you, if you feel so moved, to come. Please help us to justice the life of Marcello Woodard.
What time is that on Saturday?
It is at noon, noon to 2:30, at 21st and Parade. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deontay Cooley, lifelong Erie resident. First and foremost, I got to give thanks and praise to God for continuing, giving me the courage to come down here and speak up, and to echo what Mimi said, yes, there's a rally this Saturday on 21st and Parade, and we would like for you all to come. As we are aware, our elected officials can speak up or show up for vigils and rallies. There's a vigil this Saturday for the gentleman who was shot and killed in Utah, and our county executive will be speaking there, a state representative will be performing there. So we ask that, if you all aren't going to be present for that rally, that you come to ours. Maybe provide some music, because, hey, there's somebody up there who's part of a band. I'll bring a speaker, maybe you all can come speak up. So I don't want to go too far, too deep into that, because I understand that the timer can get me out of here as well as the gavel. I also want to say, I came in here and I made a request that I be left alone by your friends, and they have, they have done so, so thank you for that, for meeting that request, so they can also have other requests. When we talk about justice for Cello, we don't just talk about arresting someone. I'm aware that there was a proposition for a community police review board that couldn't get the votes to go through. If you all aren't paying attention, we are having issues with our police, and our police are having issues with us. From what I saw on social media, there was a group of kids leaving Erie High, fighting police. It gets to the point now to where, like, when can we talk to our police, and when can the police talk to us about maybe some of the concerns that they have with us? Maybe some of the concerns that they have with some of our students, before somebody gets hurt by the hands of the police, or a police officer gets hurt by the hands of a parent, or by the hands of a student? A police officer just had an accident recently, and a person lost their life because of that. We, as a community, we as citizens, don't get an opportunity to speak to our police in manners to where we can have a better understanding of one another. There's a gentleman by the name of Michael Birchfield, who's on, he's a police officer in Pittsburgh. He shares information with us on social media all the time, and he's very non-biased. He calls us out when we're wrong, he stands for police officers when they're right, and he shares his opinions about when things take place that happen, where he shares his opinion. Why can't we hear from our local police about the issues that are going in our community? Why is it that you all can't establish a board to make sure that we can have those conversations? And then again, I want to go back to us having a town hall meeting, or us having some type of conversation. This does not work for anybody. It does not work for us to stay here and talk to you. That's why I leave. I don't care to hear what y'all have to say when I leave here, because I can't respond, I can't reply. But again, when the ICE situation took place, Brock Copeland hosted a town hall meeting up at the Jefferson Education Society. It was a room full of people who I've never seen before, speaking their concerns, sharing their opinions. Why can't you all do something like that? Why won't you come into the community and speak to us? And some of you have. Dr. Tyler Titus, again, I know I'm not supposed to say names, but thank you for everything. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. You've put it on the line for us, and I truly appreciate that, and I'm not sure if that's unethical or not, but I do know that your heart is pure and your intentions are pure, so I want to say thank you. I also know that it's election time, and there are some of you who are going to be running, so you'll be out in the community at events. So we have our events, and we host things, maybe come and show up. And when we go to the county council meeting, maybe you all should come stand there behind us and support us as well. We need some support from you all. This is nothing for me to come down here, I'm going to keep coming down here, I'm going to keep making noise, I'm going to keep calling people out by name on social media. I learned I can't do it here, but I'm not going to stop, and nobody's going to stop, because we need the help of you all. And the last thing that I'll say is, I've been reading a book by Carter G. Woodson, The Miseducation of the Negro. And I believe every single person in this room needs to read that book or listen to that book, because every single person in this room is identified within that book. And then even helping some of the people within the community. We are at a place to where we need to be educated. We need to speak to the people who make decisions for us, and you all need to come down off of your pedestals and meet us in our neighborhoods and talk to us. Whatever you did in the past, it doesn't matter today, because that book was written, I believe, in 1931. And we are still dealing with the same issues. I just listened to Malcolm X, The Baller or the Bullet. That was in 1961. We are still dealing with the same issues. So when is it that you all are going to start speaking up? I know there are some of you that are sitting on City Council that, after this election, you're done. So at this point, why not put it all on the line for us? Why not say, hey, I stand with the people who are seeking justice for Cello? Hey, I stand for justice and change in the city of Erie. We want the police to talk to the community. We want our mayor to be accessible. We want to be accessible. I sent Jim Renarski an email, May 30th, he has yet to respond. I sent you an email, when I was running, nobody wanted to talk to me, and now all of a sudden, let's talk, let's sit down and talk, even from the bishops in the church and all of that. So where was the support when it was beneficial for the people? But the support came when it was beneficial, okay, get the heat off of me. You know what I mean? It's beneficial to have people come down here, try to buy repositories, or try to get funds and stuff like that. But when it's beneficial for us, and we are crying for help, and we are coming down here, and we are calling you out, and we are antagonizing you, your social media, and your posts and your comments, y'all don't speak for us, and then we start seeing these yard signs, it's insulting. So I'm, again, I'm going to ask you all to start speaking up for us, because the Republicans are speaking up for what they feel and what they believe in, regardless of our thoughts about it, regardless of how we feel. So that's my take on that. Please come help us, because we are not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Otto Dusov. I'm a citizen, taxpayer, and vet of Erie, PA. I've had an ongoing problem for the last couple of years with my neighbor, the upkeep of his property. I've contacted the zoning officer numerous times, in fact, last week. Had no results. He said it wasn't his problem, it's code enforcement problem. But I'm just fed up, I need some help. I pay taxes, substantial taxes, and my neighbor is, it's just like a pigsty, his neighborhood. I've complained and complained, but I don't, apparently on deaf ears. But I just need some help getting my neighbor's property cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Question?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Just trying to make eye contact with Moss Saylor back there.
Oh, okay.
I'll make sure he got connected.
Okay. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? You're a nun, Lori.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16560, ordinance 702025, and ordinance amending and supplementing Article 1301 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, namely known as the City of Erie Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance, also known as SALDO, and specifically to amend Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, which redefines major and minor subdivisions, as well as revises the review process for SALDO applications, and promotes a moderate and consistent approach to the development and/or land subdivision in the city of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16560, and now known as Official File Ordinance 702025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 702025, finally by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16561, Official Ordinance 712025, and ordinance amending Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, specifically Part 1 of Article 11309F1, whereby the monetary limit in the form of percentage and/or lesser amount for inter-fund transfers authorized by the mayor without prior council approval is increased. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16561, and now known as Official File Ordinance 712025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 712025, finally by yea seven nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16562, an ordinance to repeal, ordinance number 512025, passed and approved by Erie City Council on July 2nd, 2025, as it was a duplication of Ordinance 662025, passed and approved by the City Council, September 3rd, 2025. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance Number 16562, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16562 by yea seven nay zero on Council file number 16563, an ordinance appropriating a sum of $100,000 from unappropriated fund balance in the paving and sewer revenue fund for the expenditure thereof. Funds will be used for the 2025 Streets Improvement Program, sponsored by Councilmember Brazinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop. The Council File Ordinance 16563, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16563 by yea seven nay zero on Council file number 16564, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $365,935.52 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. It's a contribution from the FEMA Fiscal Year 2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant for Training Firefighting Personnel Against Fire and Fire-Related Hazards. Sponsored by Councilmember Shoff, seconded by Councilmember Brazinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16564, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16564 by yea seven nay zero on I'd like to go back in the agenda and ask if there's anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Okay. We don't have old business, we don't have new business, but we could ask for a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Motion to move the balance of the agenda?
Then properly move the second.
Move by Chuck Nelson, seconded by Jasmine Flores, to move the balance of the agenda. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. It's not quite 9:30.
Committee reports.
Okay. We'll go to committee reports, because it's not 9:30 yet.
Okay. We'll start with Councilwoman Shoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the people who spoke today.
Thanks. And thanks for the catch.
So, the fountain turns pink tomorrow at Perry Square for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It is very meaningful to myself, as my mother passed away in her 40s of breast cancer. I would like to... I would like to thank Jeremiah Robertson, who was our head security person at the front desk, front door, entranceway. He has been promoted to a higher position in his security firm, and we wish him the best on his promotion and thank him for his time spent welcoming people into City Hall. I am going to extend well wishes to William Marucci, our deputy chief, who retired this past Friday. He had 28 years of service to the people of the city, and I see that the mayor had given him a key to the service or to the city last week. And I wish him the best on his retirement. He served for 28 years and was first in the United States Marine Corps. That's all.
Thank you very much. Are we on time?
Councilman Trup. Council President, just a few things. As I've said before, much respect to the people who, family, friends, community members who continue to seek justice for Cello. You have to, no matter where you stand, you have to have respect for people who continue to fight for something they believe in and keep it alive. And also, I'd like to say, I went to the Porch Fest, our West Bay Front. It was really well organized and a great event. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Brazinski, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. One, two, three.
Thank you for your report.
Just quickly, our little tailors almost made it. Great run. They can start another one next year. I'm speaking to Sea Wolves, of course. The Port Authority again is making information available for future plans of the Coke site, so stay tuned for that. And other than that, my three minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I think we'll go into a public hearing at this time.
Members of council, it looks like our photographer is late.
She's right back here.
Do you want to do another report while we're waiting?
We sure can. Councilwoman Flores?
My report consists of, we had the Environmental Advisory Council meeting on the 24th of September, and that was at 3 o'clock. You can go back and re-watch. It was a pretty good discussion on community solar possibly coming and being something that the environmental council will recommend. We had a gentleman, Jason, Justin Mason, who reached out and wanted to invite council to a presentation in August. I didn't catch the email until after the fact, and he did explain what his company is doing and getting more information to the environmental caucus so that they can present to council if it's a good recommendation or not for us to at least try to assist in the participation. Right now, I guess there's legislation in the Senate, and there's a bill. So we'll see what happens with that. They're going to be voting on that next meeting, so I'll keep you all updated on that. And then I do know that the Sea Wolf season has winded down, but our Erie Otters are picking up. I know that we have a few different events that'll be going on in the community, and I just wanted to remind people to please be very vigilant when you are going down to Blasco Library so that the patrons of the library can get across. Sometimes that speed that we are driving isn't quite 15 miles per hour, and I feel as though someone's going to get hurt. And I'd rather avoid that happen versus it actually happened. We have to be mindful. So I just wanted the people to be very aware that with the closure of the Bayfront Connector, people are going through the Blasco entry point, and it is getting dangerous. So just be mindful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are we ready? Okay, we have to swear something. Yes?
If you want to finish the committee report, you can probably set it by then.
Oh, okay. We can continue. Yes, sir.
Hearing from the one citizen, Deontay Cooley, you know, we have strengthening police community partnerships. We haven't had an update on that in a while. It might be, it might be nice to have a presentation or something so that the public can be familiar with some of the stuff happening there. There was some thought and discussion of codifying that in a little more substantial way a couple of years ago, but, you know, Pennsylvania really is restrictive about what kind of authority can be given to any, any outside board. You know, we're seeing that in Harrisburg with their implementation and with the state parole stuff. So I had an airport authority meeting. Nothing particularly notable from that meeting. And as Councilman Trup had pointed out, we had Porch Fest this past weekend. Myself and Dave Tamilonis organized that with some help from our West Bay Front staff with Starla there. Kathy, I think, popped through, and Mo played, obviously. The mayor and Rhonda came through and listened to some music. So it was really great to see the neighborhood out. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Dr. T.
All right. The zoo is still in negotiations, so we don't have much to update there. Their next board meeting is October 28th. EMTA met on September 22nd. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. I'm still awaiting an update. So I'll report out more thoroughly at our next meeting. I don't have other liaison reports. Do want to remind everybody that the last day to register to vote is October 20th. The last day to request a mail-in ballot is October 28th. And to go to the comments in which we received today, 91 days with no new information is a, is a lot for, for all of us to, to, to hold and to swallow. And I would like to see a community conversation, so I'm going to reach out to some community partners to, to put this together, not in, just so that there can be some connection and feel like that there's space being held. And to say that there is a chasm of division and hate, I think, is, is genuinely an understatement. And just to encourage all residents that we do not have to, we do not have to subscribe to this rhetoric. We can encourage, and I encourage everyone to engage with their neighbors, to engage with the people who live on your street, to live, who live in the same housing unit as you, and, and to go out and to volunteer at some of these organizations with the people who are working day in and day out, that are serving our city, to get a real understanding of, of people that maybe we don't understand. Because we, we're not going to accomplish anything if, if we stay in this, this, this moment of, of hatred and tension. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just want to let you know, every one of us received, or should have received, a five-year strategic plan from the Erie Housing Authority. I will leave my copy in the Kirk's office if any citizen wishes to review what they gave us. Plus, you can go on their website. Their plan included the residents, their community partners, their staff, and in the past, they've done an outstanding job of including everyone in their plan that they serve. And I encourage you to go on their website, take a look at it, whether you are resident or not. They're doing an outstanding job. In regards to Brother Cello, some of us are quiet giants, and that sometimes I'm in that category. So if I'm not out there saying it out loud in the mic, I'm somewhere in the back room doing the best I can. That's my MO. But I will try to make the event on Saturday. Some of you know and some of you don't. I deal with some health issues. So if I can make it, you'll see me there. If not, my prayers will be there. Administration.
I'll be quick, just a couple things. So the Councilman Brazinski mentioned the Port Authority and the former Erie Coke site. There is a Future Concepts Open House on Wednesday, October 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00, at the Port Authority at 1 Holland Street, for folks to drop in anytime and provide their feedback on concepts for future planning of that waterfront property. That's October 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at 1 Holland Street. And I just want to recognize and thank FEMA for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. That's going to provide much-needed training opportunities for our firefighters that will benefit our residents and visitors to the city of Erie for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney?
No, no report.
Teresa?
No report from either.
Okay. Well, we're ready for our public hearing?
Okay, I can read the, the conditions. And first, if anybody's here to testify for or against, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in by the stenographer.
Do you swear in front of the town attorney or the whole county for nothing but the truth?
Cooper, we're going with the waterfront, Arc Terrace. At request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Arc Terrace Impact Investors for the construction of multiple family dwellings consisting of four-plex and townhouse buildings totaling 61 units located on vacant parcels fronting the 600 block of West Second, West Third Streets, and the 200 block of Cherry Street and Poplar Street, 214 Cherry Street, Second Street lots on West Third Street, and waterfront residential zoning district.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, council. My name is Cooper Moore. I'm the Assistant Planner in the Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources and the Secretary to the Design Review Committee and the Cities Planning Commission. For this application for waterfront conditional use zoning, the city staff raised no issues upon an internal review, and the application was recommended by both the Design Review Committee and the Cities Planning Commission last month. The commissions had requested more information regarding lighting fixtures, fences, mailboxes, anything else visible from the street, and we did receive that information. So there were no objections raised from the city's commissions. Some of the comments from the commissioners were praising the use of native plants throughout the project and the defensible space created by the layout proposed for this application, as well as citing the adherence to historical precedence throughout the design. And we have a presentation from Joe Sugiyama from Arc Terrace that I'll pull up here in a second.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me. Joe Sugiyama from Arc Terrace Impact Investors. We're an investment firm based in Boston, Massachusetts. This is our West Bay Front project. You can see it here. It's been designed by Opticos Design Group out of Berkeley, California, partnered with Weber Murphy Fox and John Laird and Associates to give some local design guidance throughout the course of the design process. It is a missing middle housing development. It has, it consists of 61 units. It has 93 total parking spaces. Some of them are tuck under. It consists of townhomes and four-plexes, total of nine structures across the entire building. So really, the point of this design is to encourage the residents of the community to gather within the courtyard spaces that you can see generated throughout the, the design. There's three courtyards being surrounded by the four-plexes to the north and then the townhomes to the south. Cooper, could you go to the next slide? This is the overall site plan. You can see that there are some outrigger parcels that, that connect to the streets on the east and the west. These buildings are taking advantage of the overall parcels that are available. The assemblage of the lots is a kind of, it's, it wasn't a rectangular lot. So we were trying to take advantage of the overall design of the, or the overall layout of the parcels that were for sale. We have surface parking kind of centered in the site to avoid having it come straight off of the street. The buildings to the south, the, the townhome projects, those are the ones that have the tuck-under parking. We think that this is a good option for potential residents moving forward to have some coverage from snow in the future. The four-plexes don't have any sort of covered parking, but we think we've accommodated as much as we possibly can with the surface parking. Can you go to the next slide? So this is a perspective view of what we're looking at for, this is actually the north courtyard. These are the four-plex buildings, and you can see that there's a wraparound porch to encourage people, you know, I, I heard mention of the Porch Fest in the West Bay Front. So that's something that we're trying to encourage here. That was actually a comment from the Planning Commission that we wanted to take on board. It might have been the Design Review Committee. But, so we've, we've encouraged that by wrapping the porches around to the front. We also always had the porches facing the courtyards. And again, it's just to really make it more of a community within a community, and we're really excited about the West Bay Front community generally. It's a, it's a very unique place that we're excited to do this flagship development for our firm. It's a, missing middle is something that we feel really strongly about. We think it is a really important, it's a very important type of development for us to do, especially in places like Erie that allow us to give price points to residents that are maybe not wanting to live downtown, maybe can't afford a home, but can want to be in that suburban type of community. And it will allow them to, to hopefully find a nice place to live and really encourage families and, and, you know, young professionals to, to work and live in this area. Next slide. So here's a typical elevation of one of the townhomes. You can see, we, we tried to take advantage and, and we really spent a lot of time studying the neighborhood, trying to understand what the architectural character was. So we spent a lot of time matching as much as we could with these new structures to make them not feel ominous, to make them not feel too large in order to really fit into the community. I think we, our designer did a great job putting the various parts and pieces together. And if you go to the next slide, one more after this. We've really thought about the materiality of the project, wanting to make sure that it's not just the design, but the, the building materials are within the character of the, of the community and something that is going to have a lasting effect. Because we at Arc Terrace are, you know, we're, we're developing this project, but we are ultimately an impact firm, and we're interested in long-term investment into communities. We've invested previously in the city of Erie, and we're really excited to bring a ground-up development here and something that hopefully has some lasting power to it, and something that we're certainly going to own for, for a number of years. This is not a merchant build situation where we're looking to build and flip. We're, we're looking to build and hold. So we want to be a part of the community for a long time, and having really quality building materials is part of that, along with the overall outline or overall layout of the site. We think that the site is relatively pedestrian-friendly. It has, will have appropriate lighting. We're excited to take the next step on design, work with contractors. We're excited to take the next step on design, work with contractors and figure out the pricing for the entire project. But for right now, we're looking for the approval of the conditional use application. Any questions?
Just for my, my thought process, when you guys were making this plan, did you guys go around to the neighbors and the houses that were already there and get a feel for whether or not they were going to fight you on this?
We spoke with the, the church that has the parking lot right next to it. Cooper, if you go, sorry, back to the plan.
West Erie Presbyterian.
Yeah, West Erie Presbyterian. We spoke with the, the leadership of that church and told him about our plan and we chatted about parking and whether or not, you know, what his thoughts were. But he was the only neighbor adjacent to the parcel that we spoke to directly and he seemed to be positive on the project overall, saying, you know, it's a vacant lot. It'd be nice to have something there. We've also spoken at the West Bayfront Neighborhood Community Watch, giving them an overview of what we're looking to do, asking them for feedback because we're still in the early stages of design. So we have an opportunity to make some changes. There was commentary about parking, is there too much, is there too little? So we took all of those comments on board and plan to continue to present to them as we go through the, the major land development permitting process and furthering our design.
Because I know that the city itself does need new development and we do need new housing stock. I just fear that some of the anchor residents who've been in those neighborhoods for 20-plus years might feel as though what they once had access to, like their line of vision to the water and then new buildings being put up around them might make them feel like what they have contributed to the neighborhood is no longer of value. So I just want to make sure that we are acknowledging that you might have pushback from the homeowners who might not be in favor of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
This particular spot, there's, there's a lot of trees and overgrowth there right now that, that are taller than the buildings will be. I, I don't see that. This is, this is my, my dog walking path. Yeah, I'm pretty excited to see the infill development there. I'm, I'm excited to see the fiber concrete siding, like you're using higher-quality materials that are longer-lasting. It's something that, that, you know, we're not going to see 10 years later, the plastic, you know, vinyl siding, it's being sun-bleached out. You know, I, I think a lot of this, this is pretty exciting to see your kind of investment.
Thank you.
I'm actually in favor of this. This past summer, I had the opportunity for going to weddings in Wilmington, North Carolina, and Southport, North Carolina, and they were along the waterway there. And I happen to stay in a situation like that. Are they going to be short-term rentals at all, do you know?
That is not the plan currently. They would be probably one-year leases and owned and operated by a property management company. So they wouldn't necessarily be like Airbnbs. And I, because they won't be, they'll be owned by Arc Terrace as the developer, there could be a potential for short-term leases, leases, but it wouldn't be, you know, like you think of a traditional Airbnb where it's the owner of a flat that leases that out to a, to a person on Airbnb. But the short-term rental is a good strategy, especially in some of the summer months where it's, it's been done, I've seen it done before by kind of the developer itself.
I like the use of color, too, where, you know, it brightens up with the design that you have. It's nice with the porches.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we spent a lot of time thinking about how that works. And luckily with the building materials that we chose, you kind of have your pick of what types of colors you, you can, you can select.
Other than meeting with the West Bayfront Organization, was there door-to-door survey of the residents?
There was no door-to-door survey of the residents, no.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. First, I love the, the design where it puts the courtyard in the middle. I think that's really critical. And I think honestly leans into a lot of things that I was talking about just in my liaison report. I think it encourages community, encourages connection. The only areas that I'm a little concerned in are around the price point in which we're starting, just with residents who are in that neighborhood and this pricing, starting, starting this trajectory of pricing people out. I know we need different levels of housing. We're desperate for it, just like many cities across the nation right now. We are desperate for housing. As we look at our power grid, which is already pretty maxed to the nth degree, I am curious on how we are going to support things like hybrid cars, all-electric vehicles and some of these parking spots that, the price points at which they're starting. I'm, I suspect that there will be more people who are charging their cars in these, in, who is residing here. And just thinking in this futuristic spot, like we are on a link. There's a lot of trajectory around the environment that's going to be coming, especially with data centers and such. Just how much of this can we make with more of that, that passive housing where the house is sustaining itself with electricity and heat and cooling, just the products in which we're using? So those are the, that's where my brain is going, is how can we make this so it's, it lasts? And, and Counsel Nelson had spoken on this, like the, the materials you're using, but also so that it's, it's lasting even beyond and playing into us being more forward advancement around the environment?
Yeah, no, it's a fair point. And we, we haven't considered, and we need to speak with the power company to make sure that there's sufficient power for EV charging stations and to contemplate solar. But we, we haven't considered solar on our project yet. I think EV parking, to your point, is kind of a, a requirement to a certain extent to get the tenants, if you have a Tesla and you want to live here, you probably want a place to plug in your car. So that is definitely something that we're going to consider in the next design phase as we get closer or more into the weeds with the utilities directly with, with our civil engineer.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend reaching out to VelocityNet and making sure that they, you know, have access to giving fiber to that bulk of residents.
Yes.
Because that's got to be a selling point as well. And I know we're trying to make sure the city has fiber throughout. And they've been mentioning that, you know, when projects are open and getting started, it's best to have communication beforehand. So I just, you know, make sure.
No, that's a great note.
Fiber's important to my generation of, you know, residents and we're moving in and we're buying houses and we want to make Erie home. And if we have remote work, it's kind of hard to do unless you have the opportunity. Those are the higher-paying jobs.
Yes.
I want to bring those residents here and keep them here, so, yes.
Yeah, a lot of times residents would rather have internet than power. So I fully appreciate that note and we will certainly be talking to them.
Will the utilities be buried?
Yes, there's no plan for overhead utilities.
Say that again, that was my next question. You're overhead or underground?
We would go, we would go underground for all new utilities. There might, I don't know that we would necessarily bury anything that's currently there. I'd have to go back and look at the plan to, to understand how much overhead power there is around there, but I don't think there's a lot, anything within the site. We wouldn't be adding any new overhead lines, certainly.
You don't know if you'd be using a 34, 5 or something less?
I'm not sure. We would, we will certainly sort that out in the next phase of design.
He's the council member that worked for the electric company.
Okay, well, I'm out of my depth here.
That doesn't affect my pension, though. Any other questions? Okay, Laurie?
Anyone that wants to speak in favor of the proposed change and also anyone that's opposed? Gary, are you coming up for it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My, my name is Gary Canach. I have actually a property more or less across the street with my son at 250 Cherry. But the thing I want to say that's maybe, maybe unique and new in some of you being not as old as me is there's been three to five people over the last decades, some regional, some local, that took a shot at this. This is a tough property developed, shape, topography, a bunch of old trees, a real difficulty to do in construction with a little or no staging room and what they have. It's, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal plan. It's going to bring a lot of capital investment and that capital investment's going to have people living it. Those people living it, they're going to pay taxes and some of them, yes, they're going to, you know, we, we've found that there's, Erie has a great chance of a remote workforce because despite what has happened to housing in Erie, it's still cheap. It's going to remain cheap, you know, compared to other cities. Yeah, I hope they do, I do hope they plan for Vnet and/or, you know, some sort of, you know, high, high-capacity broadband. I suspect he was a little bit unsure, but I suspect he'll have all the capacity in the world to go underground with everything, you know, fiber, electric, obviously gas and water and stuff like that. But this is a game-changing investment. This is the 2.7 acres, doesn't have a view, but it is in northwest Erie. It's a big piece. A lot of people would be living there. They have a great reputation and I hope you approve it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, Laurie.
No, you go.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor of? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against the project? Is there anyone to speak against the project? Here or not?
Okay, we can move on. That closes this public hearing on this matter and we can move on to the next one. We have a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Beeler and Associates on behalf of the Erie County Convention Center Authority for construction of a two-story addition to the existing parking ramp located at 30 Sassafras Pier in a waterfront commercial zoning district. Cooper?
Thank you. This project has also been unanimously recommended by the Design Review Committee and the City's Planning Commission. Notes from the Commissions included positive remarks for dealing with the impact of snow on a structure, which we know in Erie can be pretty significant. And they also had questions about lighting and security measures, which they were assured will be continued to match the existing security measures already in place. And we have another presentation from Shaleen Beeler.
Good morning. I'm Shaleen Beeler. I'm with Beeler and Associates Architects for the project representing Erie County Convention Center Authority. As Cooper mentioned, we are proposing to add two floors to the existing parking ramp that's at the Sassafras Pier. This will help with overflow from the convention center, from Marriott Hotel itself and the retail that's there, and also future development for Erie County Convention Center. So we are planning, as I mentioned, the two stories. So we're going to add 232 parking spaces with this two-story addition. We meet the maximum height for the zoning requirement, which is why we're stopping at the, the two additional floors at five stories total. And we're adding a small canopy entrance at the east side. So when people are coming to and from the convention center, you can see where you enter into the parking ramp off the east side. Do you want to go to the next slide, please? So you can see it here on the bottom little corner next to the retail. You can keep going, Cooper. So I just added all the plans so you can see what's already there. We're not changing anything on the other floors. Again, so that's the third floor and then we continue. What we're doing is on the top floor now, there are enclosures for the stair at the top floor, storefront aluminum, storefront enclosures, glass enclosures. We are removing those on the third floor. We're going to rebuild the same types of enclosures on the upper floors. So if you go to the next, so that's on the fifth floor. So we're going to have those same enclosures for the elevators and stairs on the top floor to help protect against the weather when you're on the upper floors. That's the top floor. The lighting for the, the building is going to be similar that's there now on the upper floor. So there's going to be the post-lighting on that top level. And then on the exterior, it's going to be the same materials. It's just going to look, the same materials, the same precast, the same brick veneers, except on the west side, we're going to add metal panels. I was shocked, I went in there, I know the snow blows here, but I was amazed at how from the west side it blew all the way in and through to the east side of the parking ramp. And then the wind keeps blowing and it just iced over. So we're going to help, try to help minimize that. So we're adding metal panels. They'll, they'll still have, they'll kind of be perforated, so you'll still get the ventilation. We have to maintain the ventilation for code reasons for the parking ramp. So there'll be kind of grated-looking panels on the entire west side that'll help block the snow that'll continue to hit that west side. So you can see here on that bottom picture is going to be all those panels on the west side. You can keep going again. So now you can see the materials. We're going to match what's there. We're going to match the existing brick, the existing precast and existing cast-in-place concrete. And then on the bottom, the photos on the bottom right, you can see the existing storefront aluminum enclosures. We're going to use the same types of materials and colors to match what's already there. And then on the bottom, you can see that there are going to be clear anodized aluminum panel on the west side that'll help block that snow. So any questions, concerns, comments?
I was just at lunch the other day at Pier 6. So how is it going? Do you have to move Pier 6 up a bit?
No, Pier 6 will stay just as it is and you'll still enter Pier 6 on the third level.
Okay.
They'll just be parking above that.
Okay. Thank you.
No, we're not changing any of those entrances.
Can't ruin a good place, do you?
That's exactly right. We're helping them. We're adding more parking to help them.
When you add more parking now, the parking space for a vehicle is so many feet.
Correct.
Is there consideration of widening that, which would take, take away a few parking spaces? And my question is, when folks get out their car, if it's narrow, you get a lot of door bumps on your car.
Yes.
And I've noticed that most of them are the same and I'm sure it meets our code. But should we consider changing our code to making that a little wider, which will decrease the number of parking spaces?
Personally, I agree with you. I get more dings on my car. But code-wise, we do meet the current code for the parking spaces, which will help us maximize the number of spaces that are there.
I know that's hard to do because if you got a small car, you need a little bit. If you have a truck, you need a little more. It's bad when you come out and you see the dent and you see the envelope on your windshield, you say, oh. And then you open it up, it says, I'm sorry. And that's it. But, okay.
And I heard you correctly that this meets the height allowance.
Correct.
So you're not going above the height allowance.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Any further questions from Council?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor or opposed to this project?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Laurie. Oh, I thought someone was calling in. No, go ahead.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else opposed? Anyone else opposed? Anyone else opposed? I think this concludes the public hearing.
Thank you very much, everyone. Very good presentation. It's going to benefit our city. Okay, well. If there is no other business, meeting's adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:00. City Council adjourns at 10:05 AM. Council members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus and Troop.